Okay, we don't know what it is.
Exciting.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the study session of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California Wednesday, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty meeting to order. Mr. Otamian, would you call role, please?
Commissioner Prescott.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Cosgrove. I do not see him in attendance. Commissioner Camp.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem McCann. Your vice chair Tyler. Vice Chair Tyler indicated to staff that she would not be in attendance today. And Chair Crandall.
Here. We have one item of business, just wanted to quickly ask, does anyone have problems starting at this hour? In the future, it helps staff out not having to stay late and all. If you do, go ahead and we can talk about that in the regular meeting.
Maybe during.
Or something.
Yeah, maybe during the reports of the commissioners.
Yeah.
The commission.
But just wanted to think.
Whether they want to agendaize that for another meeting.
Okay, we have one item today. And it is on the draft coastal implementation plan and land use plan amendment. And Chris Wright is our staff member presenting this tonight. So, Chris, you have the floor and that's Leah is also here for the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Cecilia Gardo-Daly, Community Development Director. We're very happy to be at this place with the with our coastal planning efforts. Before you tonight will be an overview of our coastal implementation plan. We'll go into more detail about what it is and what it means and how it integrates with our existing policy documents. But essentially, this will be a new chapter of the zoning code related to coastal development specifically. So tonight, we've got a study session for you. We've got Christopher Wright, a staff planner who is working with us on the project. And then also as part of this presentation tonight is Lesleya Meyerhoff. She is a consultant for the city and she's acting as our local coastal program manager. So we're going to go over the Coastal Act, generally what it is, what it governs, what it means, why we're subject to it. The purpose of a local coastal program and having one certified by the California Coastal Commission. We're going to talk about the different parts of the local coastal program. We'll go into more detail about one component or one part of the local coastal program, and that's the implementation plan, which is the focus of this session tonight. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Lesleya now to talk about the coastal zone and give us an overview of the regulatory framework that we're working under.
Great, thank you, Cecilia. Good evening, Commission Chair and Commissioners. As Cecilia explained, the the study session tonight is focused on the local coastal program. And it's important to know that the the local coastal program or the LCP really only applies to lands within the city's coastal zone. You may recall from previous study session, we sort of outlined what the coastal zone consists of, but it's it's essentially fifteen percent of the entire area of the city shown here in the map. In the southern end of the city, I five is is the approximate inland boundary of the coastal zone. And then in the northern part of the city, it varies, but it's roughly about it ranges anywhere from about a thousand feet to twenty to two thousand feet inland from the beach and the ocean. Within the coastal zone, there's a lot of important infrastructure, including the city's marine safety headquarters, the municipal pier, all of the beach and public recreational amenities like parking lots, bathrooms, those are all within the coastal zone and and would be subject to the city's LCP. The city has approximately five miles of shoreline that are governed by the local coastal program. Next slide, please. And one of the unique things that the city has is called a categorical exclusion order. And there's very few cities that I'm aware of in California that have a categorical exclusion order. And the city's has been in effect since nineteen eighty-two, so about forty years. And what this means is that there are certain types of projects which are primarily single-family homes that are located not on the beach, not on the bluff, and not in or adjacent to coastal canyon. And these projects have been identified by the coastal commission as having basically no potential to affect coastal resources. So they are subject to a waiver from a coastal development permit or a CDP requirement. So this is a this is a really good thing for a lot of property owners within the city who are covered by the categorical exclusion order. And as I said, the the order has been in place for about forty years. It will remain in place until the LCP is fully certified. At which time the city plans to update the categorical exclusion order and refine the maps and possibly add additional types of development projects that would be eligible to be excluded from coastal act requirements and permitting. Next slide, please. So at the start of the process, back in two thousand fourteen, the city identified some of the key objectives that guide all aspects of the efforts that are underway, including the land use plan, the IP, and some of the other documents we've worked on in recent years. The number one goal for the city has always been to retain local control of the process and to make sure that the all the policies and development standards reflect the city's vision and goals for itself. And that the local preferences and unique conditions that exist in San Clemente, which are different from other cities. We want to make sure that those are fully embedded and reflected in all the documents that we develop. Ultimately, this provides greater certainty to business owners and property owners, people who are in the coastal zone and are affected by the city's LCP. And ultimately, the goal here is to streamline the permitting process so that when people come forward with development proposals, they only need to come to the city to get a permit. They don't have to go to the city and then go to coastal commission and then come back to the city. So that's that's kind of the the big picture here of what we're trying to keep in mind is we are trying to streamline a permitting process in the future. Next slide, please.
Just a second, sorry.
No problem.
There you go.
Okay, great, thank you. So this sort of encapsulates all the things that we've been working on since about two thousand fourteen, when the city kicked off its process to update its its land use plan. Much of this effort has been supported by coastal commission grants. The city has been the recipient of three grants to date, and we have submitted an application for fourth grant, and we should hear the outcome of that application sometime next month, when coastal commission has their next public hearing. So just to to summarize here, for those of you who are not familiar with the process or have have not been involved up to this point, the major milestones that we have accomplished are listed here, starting with the two thousand eighteen LUP. We were able to get that comprehensively updated and certified by the coastal commission in two thousand eighteen. In two thousand nineteen, we completed the sea level rise vulnerability assessment. And then following on that, last year, we completed the coastal resiliency plan. And that brings us to where we are here now with the draft implementation plan or IP and the draft land use plan amendment, which we prepared and published on Monday of this week to start a six-week public review and comment period. So that'll continue through March twenty-eight. And then we will be back before the planning commission sometime in the in the spring or summer with an updated version of the of those documents after we've had the benefit of public review and comment. I think now I'm handing the presentation off to Chris Wright.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Christopher Wright, associate planner, too. And I'll be going over the implementation plan, the new part to the city's local coastal program. This is the implementation plan is identified as a strategic priority in the city's general plan strategic implementation program. And it's a high priority item with the objectives that Lesleya had laid out, and this would be the primary tool the city would use to implement the coastal land use plan and general plan policies for the area within the coastal zone. So it is the primary regulatory document for the city in that area. The way it would work is is that if a regulation is not in what is what the the implementation would be a new title of the municipal title eighteen. And if a regulation is not in that title eighteen implementation plan, then you would use the regulations in the zoning ordinance. The other thing to make a note of is similar to our specific plans. The specific plans in the coastal zone would be part of this, be part working in conjunction with their zoning code and the the IP, because if you have a standard for a specific plan that's within the coastal zone, let's take the pier bowl area, for example, you would first start with the pier bowl civic plan. If there's a standard in there, you would use it. Then if a standard is not in there, then you would go to title eighteen, the implementation plan. And then if a standard is not in there, then you would use the zoning code. So they all work together. It just depends upon the subject matter. There's we used the zoning code as our base. So we pulled content from our zoning code. Wherever there was some topic that we knew that was specific to policies in the local, the coastal land use plan. And we also looked at the city of Newport Beach and Sedona Beach's implementation plan to give us guidance on implementation plans that were more recently certified by the coastal commission. So we had a good understanding of the type of regulations that the coastal commission would support for the city. But adapting them again for the city of San Clemente to ensure that it reflects this community's values and its own policies. So if the city were to take on certification and permit authority with final completion of an implementation plan, the city would now be processing coastal development permits in the coastal zone. And that means if you had, say, a conditional use permit for a type of use, you would also be seeking a condition coastal development permit that the city planning commission or city council, city council would be acting on. And that would be the decision that would be made. Now, there's certain areas of the city, they're called appealable areas that are defined in the implementation plan, where if a decision is made in that appealable area, then the coastal, the the decision could be appealed to the coastal commission to make a review of the city's decision. Those areas would be outlined on a map that we would be working on with the coastal commission. But generally, they are they're defined as areas with reference to the coastline. And since they're resource areas, also public works projects. And if you have more questions on that, then you know, I can entertain them. And and I just want to make a note that the we welcome questions throughout this presentation. If you have questions, you can ask them now. You don't have to wait until the end. So do you have any questions on this slide before I go to the next one?
Yeah, I'll I'll just throw one quick one out, and this is for Cecilia and or Chris. Will there be a document for applicants that shows the sequence of reviews the city does? In other words, which documents they look at first and that progress that you you indicated? As far as specific plans, zoning ordinance, implementation plan, et cetera. So at least they are educated or they can get themselves educated in the process.
Well, the implementation plan does lay out procedures, and it does explain that the specific plans for those areas are the primary tool that you refer to first, much like an overlay zone. But there is not like a flow chart, if that's what you mean, but we could always make that a part of our coastal development permit application that could be prepared in conjunction with this plan. So the coastal development permit application that the city would have could go into additional detail on how the public would use these documents. And in addition to having a website, we can we can add to this.
Okay, just I'm just looking for a tool for the applicants. So they don't say, hey, we're lost here.
Sure, good point.
Can I ask a question? Oh, Mr. McCann.
Yeah, Christopher, so if an applicant comes in, they're going to first, let's say it's in the pier bowl, they're going to first look at the at the specific plan for the pier bowl and any guidance that it gives. They incorporate that into their project, and they they also go to the implementation plan and the zoning code, or does do they kind of if it's in the if it's covered in a specific plan, it stops at the specific plan level?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so for example, let's take the mixed use four area in the pier bowl, there's setbacks that pertain to those properties and various development standards. Those development centers would be the primary standards. However, the implementation plan, my next slide goes into there's additional requirements that are new to the not in the zoning code. And it it's pretty clear when you go to title seventeen that that content content is not in our normal zoning code because it's specific to coastal resources. So we're while we we largely based this draft on the zoning code, the title eighteen, this implementation plan is it's it is distinct in several ways. So I can go over that next unless there's other questions on this.
Side. Just have a quick question.
No.
Okay. Oh. So this has to be certified or is it approved by the coastal commission? You mentioned that. Are you going to you're going to fill us in on that a little bit as well?
Yes, we're going to talk about next steps towards the end of this. But yes, the way this works is the city would go through a process which we do consult with the coastal commission. Through this process, the city is taking to avoid major surprises later. We want to ensure we have good collaboration with coastal staff. So we have a supportive recommendation later and can work through any issues early. So it's a smooth process. But yeah, the city would take action on the implementation plan. And then the way it works is the coastal commission very often will have suggested modifications that the city would consider. And then the city would act on those, and then it would go back to the coastal commission for consideration of certifying the document. So we can get a little bit more into the next steps at the end.
Okay, but not all properties within the zone are considered by or needed coastal commission approval.
Yes, the the main objective of this would be largely to have the city make decisions on projects in the coastal zone. So there's only one area where it would not be really a part of this implementation plan because of a choice that Kepa Starnes Shore has made to to kind of have a carve out for their little area. But for the most part, decisions will be made by the city. And there is also a only a limited area that is in the appealable area. It's like three hundred between the sea and the first public road or three hundred feet. Sensitive resources, like I said, there's defined geographic areas that the coastal commission to have ten days to call up a decision that the city makes. But the balance of the coastal zone, the city would be making a decision. And and so that would greatly streamline review for a lot of people.
Okay, so it could be appealed by the coastal commission is what you're saying.
For certain areas of the coastal zone, not all of the coastal zone.
Okay, so the goal is for applicants not to have to go separately to the coastal commission for approvals. Everything would be at the city level.
Correct. Yeah, and and also I to add on to that, we like we've pointed out, we have an exclusion order. So there's a a bunch of properties in the city. We have one now. We have this exclusion order. We have plans to update it to reflect new topic areas like accessory dwelling units. And if you meet the criteria of that exclusion order and you're in the area of that, then it even more streamlines the process. So this is all meant to improve customer service for people.
Thank you.
Sure. Should I go to the next slide? Okay, so I'll cover a little bit on a high level of what is different about the implementation plan. So you're going to find that there's some subjects that are just not covered in the zoning ordinance because they're specific to the coastal resources. So we have, you are familiar with the pedestrian overlay in the general plan and the zoning code. It's called the the central business overlay. That's like our downtown district in our north beach district. It's meant to encourage visitors serving type commercial uses. The coastal commission refers to that as the visitors serving commercial district. There are policies that are pretty similar to what's in our general plan. But this is a term and a term that is different for the implementation plan. So it would be known as a visitor serving commercial district, not the central business overlay. And there's a part of the code that would define what type of review is necessary for types of uses. It encourages retail restaurants, visitor serving type activity in defined districts within that overlay. Next, the coastal development permit. What are the review procedures, appeals? What type of materials do you need to provide to have an application? What are the noticing requirements? That would be in the implementation plan. And what if you want to make an amendment to a coastal development permit, for example? When what did who makes the determination for whether a project is in the exclusion order or not, or the appealable area? And what options do people have to push an item, a determination like that up to a higher level? The next is the process for obtaining emergency coastal development permits. Sometimes in the city, we have we have natural events that require emergency action to address a safety issue. And this lays out a process to have a streamlined coastal development permit to address instances of public safety. Without that emergency permit, then you are causing a hazard and and there needs to be a an expedited way to take action on those type of situations. So that would be laid out here. Setback requirements for the coastal bluff and canyon lots are updated to reflect what is in the coastal land use plan. There are some wording in the policies that was updated in the coastal land use plan. This has regulations that mirror what's in the coastal land use plan. And it gets in a little bit more detail with biological resources and sensitive areas, which is the next point here. So sometimes you're going to need a biological study if you are in a hundred feet of an environmental sensitive habitat area. There's a biological report that's part of the coastal land use plan. And it defines the sensitive areas. So if you if you have a project within proximity to those sensitive areas, you would need to meet certain requirements that are new to this title. Coastal hazards analysis, so it would consider sea level rise. Sometimes you would need a geological report. And that is something that is required by the coastal mission right now. You have a project on a bluff lot, you're doing major remodel or new development. They require a biological study and a geotechnical report. So the the implementation plan needs to reflect that, given the city would be making those decisions, not the coastal commission. Public access standards for some bluff lots, we have coastal access points that are defined in our local, our coastal land use plan. And this lays out requirements to preserve those access points. So you can't, for example, put a fence in that restricts access down to the beach. The next thing is dates and thresholds for major remodel and legal nonconforming structures. We're going to get into that in a little bit more detail in the next slide, so I won't get too much into that, but it's similar to our nonconforming ordinance. It's just updated to reflect the coastal act. We have updated definitions to reflect the coastal land use plan and coastal resources. And then also a topic is parking. The coastal land use plan encourages alternative parking strategies. There's a mention of tandem parking and stack parking. So this draft plan includes new provisions for those parking parking options. So I'll touch on that for residential uses. For single family and duplexes, you could have tandem parking if it meets all the standards. If you have three or more units and you are within half a mile of a transit stop, you could also have those parking options. And there's a permit requirement if you don't meet some of the criteria. We if you have questions, we could go over to that. But I think that covers enough to give you a sense of how title eighteen is different than our zoning ordinance. So if you do you have any questions before I move on? Okay. And now I'm going to transition it back to Lesleya.
Thank you, Chris. So Chris just gave an overview of title eighteen, which is the IP. And that's really one half of the focus of a study session and what's before you tonight. The the other part is the land use plan amendment. So the the land use plan was updated and certified in two thousand eighteen. And as part of that update, there were some new definitions added, including the definition of a major remodel. A major remodel is essentially when you take an existing structure, a house or other primary primary structure, and you modify it greater than fifty percent, then it's considered a major remodel, and it's basically treated like brand new development. And it's subject to more stringent standards in the city's LUP and IP. The fifty percent is only for structural components, and it applies specifically to exterior walls, the roof structure, the floor structure, and the foundation. So you could have, let's say, for example, forty-nine percent change to your exterior walls. And you could have forty-nine percent change to your roof. And you would still technically be below the major remodel threshold because those those thresholds among the structural components are not additive. You only would count exterior changes over time. And once any of those structural components exceeded fifty percent, then you are in the major remodel category. And so this is an important definition, and again, it's brand new in two thousand eighteen. So the focus of the land use plan amendment is to make sure that the city starts counting these structural changes beginning in two thousand eighteen, not starting to count them as of nineteen seventy-seven. So the land use plan amendment is very focused on this singular issue. And it's limited to major remodel. It doesn't affect any other elements in the coastal act like shoreline protection or defining what's an existing structure. I think that's it on that slide. So Cecilia, I think back to you now for the schedule and next step. I think that's it on that slide. Um, so Cecilia, I think back to you now for the schedule and next step.
So we are getting ready to a public draft, uh, or we published a public review draft of the document um, on Monday, February fourteenth. Um, when your um, planning commission packet was distributed to you uh, last week. Um, the link to the document. So um, we just sent that information to you today. Um, it's a six week public review period. Um, so you'll have an opportunity to look at that. Um, we can always come back um, between now and the end of the six week public review period and talk more about the document, answer questions and get into um, any issue areas that you want to cover. Um, at the end of the public review period, we are um, intending to revise the draft based on public input. Um, see coastal commission input, um, any input that we receive, um, legal, other departments. And um, we intend to publish a public hearing draft of the document in the spring or summer. After that, um, we'll take it to, we'll bring it back to the planning commission as a hearing body to make a recommendation to the city council and then we'll send it to the city council for for final approval. And then once the city council adopts the um, the implementation plan and the land use plan amendment, then um, we will submit it to the California Coastal Commission. And then it'll go through their review process and eventually um, make it in front of the full coastal commission for review. So it's it's a bit of a process, quite a few steps along the way. Um, but um, in terms of milestones, we are at the first one. Um, publishing the public review draft uh, for public input and review. Next slide. And that is, that concludes our presentation. Um, I think one thing that we wanted to do since the draft document wasn't available to you when the packets were distributed. Um, we were gonna have Chris um, pull up the table of contents and just um, just generally go over uh, the main areas that um, the implementation plan will cover.
Okay. So first, we have part one. So that's something you're gonna see a little different. In our zoning code, we don't have parts. This document has six parts to it. And part one is the implementation plan applicability. How does this document apply in the coastal zone? So general requirements, you need to make an interpretation of the document. What is that process? The zoning map, there's maps at the end of this document that are part of the draft on the internet. Coastal development permits is part two, talks about the process, what public hearings, what did that process lay out, appeals, enforcement of the implementation plan, environmental review, those sort of procedures. So we have applications that is a subpart of that, types of applications. You can um, like, for example, if you're in that exclusion order, you'd follow this section for categorically excluded projects. If it's an emergency permit, we have a section on that. So these are the type of applications that would be part of the implementation plan. Part three are your general development standards. You're gonna see some similarities to the zoning ordinance. So fences, we have fences in our zoning ordinance. We have walls, we have grading. But in some instances, those standards need to be adapted for the coastal zone. And so we are also mindful that these type of standards are often referenced by it by the coastal commission uh, when they make decisions. And they're going to be important in implementing the the policy. So they're part of this document. Uh, one particular focus of the coastal commission is visitor serving accommodations. So we have short term lodging units in here. And we have the coastal canyons and bluff standards right here. Uh, we have parking and site access standards. And here's where those new tandem and stack parking standards are. We have landscaping standards. Uh, nonconforming, that's where your major remodel regulations are here. Part four are the specific zones, what those development standards are. So uh, development standards for single family residential in the coastal zone. Uh, that's those type of standards in this part, as well as overlay districts. So we mentioned the visitor serving commercial district overlay. That's right here. We have habitat protection standards. So I was talking about environmental sensitive habitat areas. That's the standards right here. And when you might need like biological assessment, for examples in here. Uh, coastal hazards, sea level rise, for example, stormwater runoff, water quality, historical and cultural resources, public access and recreation. Then you, part five is your definitions and acronyms and part six are your maps and figures. And then at the end, we have appendices. Those are the specific plans and the categorical exclusion order. So the the document that is on the internet, the last page has links to those appendices. They can access those from there. Do you have any questions, any particular standards of interest that you want us to talk about?
I have a couple of questions. Um, I just want to understand this. So the Lupo was amended in twenty eighteen, is that correct?
Leslie, can you talk about this?
We, we attempted to amend the land use plan in twenty eighteen. Um, following the city council adoption of the up up of the updated land use plan. Is is that answering your question?
Well, actually, no, the in twenty eighteen, the land use plan did go through a comprehensive update that was certified by the California Coastal Commission. We attempted to amend the land use plan in twenty twenty. And that um, attempt at amending the land use plan was unsuccessful.
So we're now going, we're now attempting another amendment to the twenty eighteen version, is that?
That is correct. We're um, we're, we're taking another stab at it, so to speak. Um, and um, the backstory there is that um, we had a fundamental disagreement with coastal staff about the date for um, for the major remodel, for counting cumulative changes to structures. The coastal commission um, had agreed that we wouldn't have a date for what constitutes existing or a date for for cumulative structures. Um, but in the draft document, um, it was nineteen seventy-seven, or in the final document, um, it was nineteen seventy-seven. And um, this caused a lot of concern among staff, among the community that um, here we have a new definition for major remodel in twenty eighteen. But it goes back to nineteen seventy-seven as the date for counting cumulative changes to structure. So we wanted to have um, that fixed in the land use plan and have that date be instead of nineteen seventy-seven, twenty eighteen, the date of land use plan certification by the coastal commission. Coastal commission was on board um, until they weren't. Um, or staff anyway, and so we um, tried to negotiate something with them. We, in the end, we went to a hearing. Um, the coastal commission staff um, actually agreed with our position at the hearing. Um, they took out nineteen seventy-seven, they put back in twenty eighteen. But then they added another paragraph in there that said for um, shoreline protection, existing is nineteen seventy-seven. And that was never part of our amendment request. That was actually something that we had agreed back in twenty eighteen that we would defer until the implementation plan. Um, and with that position uh, of coastal staff and of the majority of the commission, we just simply withdrew our amendment um, and decided that it wasn't worth this effort to um, continue on with local coastal program certification if the commission wasn't gonna work with us on, in good faith on this particular issue. Um, so we actually paused all efforts on the implementation plan and did not um, resume it again until um, fall of of last year, twenty twenty-one. We've, we had a conversation with the coastal commission, um, you know, very earnest conversation about, you know, what it means and how we can move forward. In the end, they agreed that um, they agreed on our proposal for the land use plan amendment as we had um, proposed it a couple of years ago. They said they would still support that. And then in in terms of the implementation plan, they also agreed that they would um, not um, have nineteen seventy-seven as the date for existing. So that, that's where we're at. That gave us enough um, confidence um, that we can move forward with the process. What happens when we get there? What happens as we move through this? Um, you know, we don't have any assurances or guarantees. Um, but that is the document that we would propose um, the planning commission and the city council support and send to uh, the coastal commission for their review. Just to be clear, we're operating currently under the twenty eighteen. The, yes, the twenty eighteen um, land use plan, yes.
Thank you for that level of detail.
Yes, sorry.
It adds a lot of color. Um, my other question is, and not to sound like a broken record, maybe I'm just slow. If if someone could explain the hierarchy of applicability again relative to the various documents. So for example, as you were scrolling through, Christopher, I saw fences as a category in the implementation plan. So let's say I'm in the pier bowl and I want to build a fence. What do I do? I look at the specific plan first, and if it talks about fences, I stop there and I and I don't have to go any farther. Or do I also have to look at the implementation plan to see what it says about fences?
Yes, so you go to the specific plan. If there's s- standards specific to fences, then you use those fence standards. If there aren't standards for fences, then you're gonna use the implementation plan. Uh, now there are some cases where uh, there's, let's say, for example, there's a standard that is not in the implementation plan. I'll give you an example, uh, accessory buildings. Right, accessory buildings in city San Clemente. If you want to have a, say, detached garage and it's under, think of it's under four hundred and fifty square feet, it can be in the setbacks. That that is not in the implementation plan. It's, it's a different standard. You would use the zoning warrants in that example.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, with that, I think that's a great question. I I think um, one thing to keep in mind is because the specific plans will be a component of this implementation plan, the coastal commission will also be reviewing our specific plans to make sure that they have um, the information that they need or the assurances they need for us to be able to issue coastal development permits.
Yeah, that makes sense because if they didn't like what was in the specific plan, they wouldn't want us stopping there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can understand why the city of San Clemente um, is motivated, interested in getting this certified. But what would be the coastal commission's um, motivation to do that? I mean, why do we think this is worthwhile at this time?
We often get asked that question, mostly by the city council.
I mean, I don't know if you can answer that, but.
Yeah, I think that um, you know, the the coastal commission has been um, very eager to have certification and coastal permit issuance in the hands of the local jurisdictions. San Clemente is one of the few remaining jurisdictions that doesn't have permit authority. And um, i- and the way the coastal commission sees is, sees it as it's less work for them um, for us to be able to issue the permits rather than applicants having to go to the coastal commission. And and um, they've backed that, you know, eagerness or willingness by um, funding this type of work through coastal commission grants. So we've actually um, received quite a bit in in grant funds from the coastal commission to um, develop the land use plan and develop this document.
That's telling. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just want to tag on to that because um, I've had some outreach by residents that live in the coastal zone. And they would like to do remediation to their property, safety, aesthetics. They've given up. They can't get into the coastal commission is extremely challenging. Getting their time, their attention, getting through the application process. For some remediation, let's say of a deck, you need to pay fifteen, twenty thousand for engineering to apply. And then they don't do anything. I think this is tremendously important to our community. Because we do have many residents that are held hostage by the coastal commission and aren't unable to move forward with essential improvements to their property because of their process. So for, from my interactions with the general community, I think this is really, really high priority and very important because of that. And so that the city could have local control over approvals would be a huge benefit. So from, that's just my anecdotal, you know, uh, if experience with this. So I encourage, you know, everything we can do uh, to actually get this to the city council, get that and then get this to the, to the point where it's approved by the coastal commission so that the residents of the city have autonomy with which they can move forward with their projects. So I think it, for that purpose alone, this is extremely valuable and important. I would, uh, just as a question though, the sea level rise vulnerability assessment as well as the coastal resiliency plan, is that part of the whole package that goes to the coastal commission as part of this entire pro- plan and program?
It, it's part of the overall local coastal program, but it is not an element or a component that needs to be certified
Okay.
by the California Coastal Commission. So we've um, developed the sea level rise um, risk assessment and the coastal resiliency plan. And um, we have given them to the coastal commission. There's no more action that um, we or they need to take um, except for us to implement it.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's really not, uh, well, what is the timeframe for this coming back? And what comes back to us? Is it just the the implementation plan and the land use plan or what's, what's um?
She has a schedule that she just wants.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry I missed that.
No, that's okay. Um, and Chris, if you want to just toggle back to that. Um, so the plan is to have a six week review period of this draft.
Right, right, Tom, right.
Um, after the end of that uh, review period, we're gonna go back and revise the document based on all the input. And then we um, intend to have a public hearing draft ready in um, March, April timeframe. So what that means is that that document will come to the planning commission. And the, when I say the document, it'll be the implementation plan and it'll be just the land use plan amendment. Um, those will come back to you uh, for a recommendation to the city council. We'll follow that up with a public hearing before the city council. So the city council can review those documents and um, hopefully adopt and then we'll send it to coastal um, in the fall of this year.
Okay, are there any act um, planned communication to the community as far as during the review period where there's a workshop or anything like that, or is it just noticed and people can send comments?
You know, we have, um, we did a press release. Yeah, we have kind of a a usual list of things that we do. Um, we put out a press release. Uh, we have an interested parties list that we e-blast to um, with information about the availability of the document. Um, we did uh, put a notice in the newspaper regarding the availability of the public review draft. Um, we like to come before the planning commission and do a study session. Um, and um, you know, we are open to any other ideas or suggestions that you might have for that and are even willing to, you know, host a workshop or any kind of public meeting to provide more information to the public about this plan.
Okay.
Uh, will we, with the package that we get, which you say has already been sent out, will it be clear which uh, components or elements of that need to be certified by the coastal commission? uh components or elements of that need to be certified by the coastal commission?
So the the document that you'll receive to review, um, that is the entirety of what the coastal commission will need to certify.
Okay, so like the stuff that he was talking about, that won't even be in the package.
It's it's what's it's everything. So for example, when Chris went through the the table of contents. Um, and we are um mirroring, so to speak, fence standards that are in Title seventeen or the citywide zoning code into this standalone chapter related to coastal development. The coastal commission wants to see those standards. They want to review them and approve them and make sure that they are in keeping with the coastal act. So they they go for everything with the fine tooth coat. The devils of the details.
Thank you.
So regarding the coastal resiliency plan, I know that's not needing certification. Is there? I I just, it's more of a, I guess, an idea than it is anything else than a question. Is there a way to have more organized activities around that plan? To me, that is also important because of the issues with our sand replenishment and funding and just the fact that erosion is a big deal to our beaches, which is a very important part of our community. And I don't know that I feel like uh there's a way to plug in, like is there a working group that's looking at that? I know we have a beach and parks commission. They have a role there. And I didn't know if there would be an opportunity for a task force, a working group that could be kind of pushing some of those things forward in the background. I know staff is times constrained, but if we had, you know, some kind of a working group where that group could then talk to other neighboring jurisdictions, get ideas, bring them to the table, discuss them, kind of work with staff to bring some, you know, uh additional hours of uh there to help the staff move that forward, those discussions, those concepts around the the different preservation strategies. That would just be my idea. Like, I know I would be willing to serve on that and uh help participate in doing some of that research and then bringing those ideas and discussing them offline. And then when we have them back in documents, then that can reflect that working group, just an idea.
Yeah, no, I think you you raise a really good point and you're echoing some of the comments that we heard loud and clear through the coastal resiliency plan input process, which is, you know, this, um you know, what's happening is is very important. The ideas in these, in this plan are important. We can't just um put it on the shelf and not think about it anymore because it's here and now. So how do we how do we continue with that momentum and and do something tangible to implement the document? So one of the things that we are doing, and we just took it to the city council last night, is um and the city council authorized staff to apply for another grant to the California Coastal Commission that would actually allow us to do things specifically that are in the coastal resiliency plan. So we're requesting um funding for shoreline monitoring and a a site specific feasibility study that would um show us um very specifically based on San Clemente's unique conditions up and down the coastline. What will work to retain sand, what it would cost to do it, and what are the permits needed for it? So I think that is an effort where we will engage the community. And we are part of a a task force or working group with other jurisdictions up and down the coast because it it's not a a city issue, it is a regional issue. But to the extent we have opportunities to get the public more involved, um, that that's a great suggestion and we're always happy and willing to do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yep. Any other questions at this time? Okay, um, Adam. We can start our regular meeting anytime after six, but those earlier than six, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Just a question for the public. How many from the public are here specifically regarding the land use implementation plan?
Was there any members of the public that would like to speak on the item?
That that's, it's not agendized, and that's why I wanted to find out how many people were here that wanted to talk to that. I'd limit you to three minutes, and it looks like it'd take nine to ten minutes uh to do it. So if you could, uh, fill out a card real quick.
Yes, and I'll meet everybody over by the podium, uh, if you could pa- pass your cards to me.
And uh, first one there can step up to the podium and then fill out their card. And and let's keep it um specific to the uh implementation plan and the uh land use plan amendment.
We're we're doing ready golf here. If you're ready, you go. I don't know if this is on or not, but.
I believe it is. We can hear you.
Uh, my name is Mark McGuire, uh, resident of San Clemente. Uh, and I'll speak briefly to this. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks to staff for all the work. I know that's a lot of work to put together a draft implementation plan like you have. I will tell you that I'm, on the one hand, very excited about the prospects of it for some of the reasons you talked about about taking local control. There are other things that frighten me about it, um, because I do a lot of work in the coastal zone. I know how detailed these things need to be to work properly. And if there are, there are, uh, what I would call uh landmines, sometimes you need to do a a mine sweep of the document before it gets certified so that you're not surprised later in time, like, oh, my gosh, the definition of uh major remodeling is cumulative all the way back to seventy seven. Those sorts of things you have to, when you're going to take over certification, you have to get it right. Both to make sure that there aren't pitfalls in there. And I'll just give you a kind of the s- the scary stories. Santa Barbara certified their plan, implementing their plan. They weren't a lot able to approve a plan, a project because of the restrictions of the LCP. And they were um ordered to um pay condemnation damages, inverse condemnation damages for not being able to allow a reasonable use of a property in the coastal zone. If that project was just a coastal commission project, it would be the coastal commission that would be footing that bill. But in that case, it's the city of Santa Barbara that has to foot that bill. So you have to be very careful that you uh have a plan that allows reasonable economic use on all the properties that are within the coastal zone. And that is, you know, big picture that it's a workable plan. I hope we can get there. I think there's a a lot of detail to be done to make sure sure of that, and I look forward to participating in the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Adam, would you like to call names in order of cards? And while we're waiting for the next, uh, either for um staff or not, even if we have jurisdiction over a project. Coastal commission can call it up to their review, review, I believe. Which would seem that we could also acquiesce and give it to them saying it's too complicated for us to handle.
My understanding, I don't know that that's been done. Leslie, are you familiar with that approach? My familiarity is with mapped areas where the city has jurisdiction to issue the coastal development permit. Other areas where the city has jurisdiction, but it's an appealable zone. So the city can issue the coastal development permit, but anyone can appeal that decision to the coastal commission.
So the coastal commission themselves can't necessarily call it. It has to be appealed by.
It it was in I in my experience, um, sometimes the commissioners themselves appeal projects to but that that area of appeal is defined and it's limited. It's not every coastal development permit. But Leslie, are you familiar with that um kind of premise where the jurisdiction doesn't want to deal with the permit or it's a complex project, they can just turn it over to the coastal commission?
Um, yes, you you know, for some some projects, um, like shoreline protection projects, sometimes cities will do that. Um, if the project is in coastal commission original jurisdiction. So that's, you know, basically a project that would be um near the main high tide line. So you could, you know, you have the option of sort of punting that project back to the coastal commission, if you will, to have them permit it. Because they will retain permit authority for anything in their original jurisdiction, regardless of whether there's an LCP that's been certified or not. And and then just to clarify on the appealable zone, um coastal commissioners can appeal that or residents can appeal that, people from outside the city, um, anybody literally can make an appeal.
I'd like to hear more about the city's liability because, well, this is important for the citizens. They have the you know, ease of working with city department. If a city makes a decision, but it's based because we were being certified by the coastal commission of the coastal commission role, I'd like to know legally how we are the ones that we paid for their loss of use of their property or the taking. How can, in other words, how can we be liable? The coastal commission is telling us that we need the CCC, you know, the certification to do it ourselves. Do we not have that liability if we just leave it with the coastal commission? In other words, I'd like to look at that Santa Barbara case to see what what really were the issues that the city. Anybody have a comment?
Yeah, and you know, we we can talk about that um some more at another time. That's actually precisely why we withdrew. Well, that's precisely why in twenty eighteen we were at the point of walking away from our efforts on a land use plan with the coastal commission because they wanted to have language in the plan that wouldn't allow rights to shoreline protection. And we we felt as though there was no legal basis for that, and we would be trading ourselves as a defendant where the coastal commission was a defendant previously. So those are, those are things that we um take into consideration. We do have a coastal attorney with BBK, um, who's advising us on the document. But we can um certainly talk about that um in at another uh meeting or study session.
Very good. Uh, next speaker, um, introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Ambrose. I'm the former chair of the coastal advisory committee. I sat on that committee for eleven years and it was recently dissolved by the city council late last year. Um, I'm speaking here tonight because I want to applaud the efforts of the city in working with the California Coastal Commission. We were, our committee was host to sea level rise vulnerability study when it was first introduced to the community. We offered many suggestions to Cecilia and Lesley when they were there. And many of them were implemented and included in the sea level rise of vulnerability study. The same with the coastal resiliency study. Even though uh those comments came in right at the end, the tailgate and and back after our our committee was um dissolved. I say these kinds of things to you, though, because this gentleman over here, the commissioner asked if what kinds of activities and are there groups? Uh, I wonder if many of you saw this article submitted by a council member, Chris Duncan, called City Council Corner, Saving Our Beaches. If you haven't, it was in the January thirteenth to twentieth publication of the San Clemente Times. I just want to add something here because this is not just a coastal advisory committee. It's not just the planning commission. It's not just community development, et cetera. It is everybody working together to try to come to uh a general agreement on protecting and conserving and preserving our beaches, our coastal zones and the business and residences where we live. So I hope Chris Duncan will not object. But he wrote a letter to the public, so I'm just going to read this part to you at the end. Uh, here's my plan to save our beaches. First is provided for recently in the recently passed California Senate Bill One. We must organize a regional task force headed by representative local and county leaders from within our literal cell from both Orange County and San Diego County. If we do not act in concert, we risk working in conflict. Second, we must develop sand resilience and sand resilience tactics specially tailored to each unique beach area within our cell, such as living shorelines, buried cobbleberms or where practical even considered groynes or artificial reefs and select select locations. This involves seeking input from coastal engineers, homeowners, nonprofits, and other stakeholders. Thursday, third, we must closely coordinate our efforts with the California Coastal Commission, which has the final say in any shoreline protection project. While some vilify the coastal commission as an unnecessary impediment, this exercise is counterproductive to expeditiously securing necessary approvals. The better course of action is to engage a commission from the start and to garner its institutional support and input. To be sure, saving our beaches is a massive undertaking, but we can do it if we focus less on optics and talk and more on real solutions and strategic action. I intend to lead on this effort. Will you join me? So I I have asked, I've given this to the the beaches, parks, and recreation committee. I also read this letter to the city council. So it's all televised and I I ask you, uh, planning commissioners to consider taking advantage of that request and that invitation from city councilman Chris Duncan to join him and join us in those efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have another speaker?
Those are all the speakers.
All the speakers. Well, thank you very much. Any comments at this point from uh commissioners? I see none. Um, so we will recess the study session um and commence the commission hearing. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, February sixteenth meeting. Commissioner McCacken, would you please uh listen to the pledge?
Please join us, me, in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Mr. Taming, would you please uh call roll and for Eileen's benefit? Commissioner Cosgrove joined us at five forty during the study session.
Thank you. Commissioner Prescott. Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner Camp.
Here.
Chair McCann.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler is out and Chair Crandall.
Here.
The next item four is special orders of business, special presentations. We have none. The next item five are minutes. We have one set of minutes from the January nineteenth twenty twenty meeting. Do we have any corrections and or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Prescott and a second by Commissioner McCacken. I'll call for a vote, Commissioner McCacken.
Aye.
Mr. Prescott. Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Aye.
Commissioner Camp. And Commissioner Crandall is also on the eye. The next item is oral written communications. Mr. Taming, do we have any written communications not um pertaining to items on the agenda tonight?
I, so far, I have one card for an item that is on the agenda.
On the agenda.
That is on the agenda.
Very good. So um we will call it up during that item. Uh, so we will go to item seven consent calendar and we have none. Uh, item eight is public hearing. And we have uh no items under public hearings. Uh, nine new business. We have zoning amendment for temporary outdoor dining and parklets. Jonathan Lightfoot is the staff member presenting for us this evening. So Jonathan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, planning commissioners. Um, I do have a presentation that I'll be sharing uh with you and with the audience to walk through a bit of the history and the proposal uh in front of us. And just to preface, as we get into this topic of outdoor dining and parklets, this is going to be a a review under new business, but this will be coming back to the commission as a hearing item. Um, and so this is going to be a good opportunity to provide feedback on staff of areas that you think should be modified or or other discussions that should be had. And then we'll be coming back again to the commission uh under that hearing at the at your following meeting. So as soon as we get the presentation up all.
While you're doing that, just for commissioners' benefit, um, this did go through design review and we specifically addressed aesthetics and materials, et cetera, not on uh appropriateness of the parklets or how they dovetail into other ordinances, et cetera. So um the effort so far has been aesthetics and materials.
Correct, and um I'll cover a bit of that history in the earlier part of the slides and this, the later part of the slides will be uh as we shift into topics for the planning commission to dive into even further. So in front of us, uh, again, uh, we're looking at parklets or outdoor dining uh in um private and public areas within the city of San Clemente. Um, and if we can go to the second slide, okay, thank you. So background, the city. So background, the city implemented a temporary outdoor operations program that was. Allowed outdoor operations, not just for dining, but for other uses as well, commensurate with any state guidelines that prescribed. Closures or limitations of indoor operations that was in place under the city's emergency order in 2020 and 2021. That wound down at the end of last year. However, there was also some new state legislation approved AB 61 and SB 314. That did pave the way for a continuation of these types of activities at local jurisdictions. And a couple bullet points underneath this to indicate elements that were considered in those legislative pieces. It was an extension of ABC's catering authorization. So that's an opportunity for local businesses to expand if they already had. An alcohol license for their interior sales. They can more easily get something or get an authorization for sales adjacent or outside of their existing premises. AB 61 in particular discusses a reduction in local parking regulations and both of these are operative for a limited term. Essentially for 2022 and 2023. Council has also discussed this topic and directed staff to work with designer view and planning commission and with a target return to them in March. Next slide, please. As Chairman Crandall noted, the designer view subcommittee took a look at this topic. A couple of times, December 15th and January 12th. A few of the recommendations from that body included incorporating standard buffers and concrete planters along the street edges of decks. Setting standard deck sizes, limiting tall elements to maintain open sight lines. Specifying ADA compliance standards, encouraging solar lighting and establishing a standard blueprint for parklets in the public street. Next slide, please. And a couple of images here. And again, this is topics that were covered by D R S E. So I'm just catching you up a little bit on. The discussions that were had there. We looked at types of railings and barriers that were used both in San Clemente and other jurisdictions nearby. And there's a star here on one, but the top right would also have a star. There was a preference for a solid barrier, but one that also had some openings. So it wasn't a completely private space. Next slide, please. And then for lighting, there was a preference amongst the subcommittee to avoid overhanging elements. And so that's why there's that. The no-go marker on the far left image, but a preference instead for some lighting that could be independent and more of a flood. Scenario. So it's not draping over the entire parklet, but in a couple of locations, ideally at the edges of those dining areas. Next slide, please. So staff put together a tentative guidelines document that the D R C reviewed and I've attached that to this report as well. That's attachment one. And this document will explain who is eligible, where the parklets would be allowed and the size, material and other design standards. I'd emphasize that there's room for some modification, of course, in that document before that returns to planning commission. And if we can go to the next slide. This is just one example of content within that. It included encouraged elements and discouraged elements. I'm not going to go through that entire list, but the goal is that it can be a readable document for any business owner who wants to apply and quickly understand. This is what I need to, the direction I need to go for design and elements that are discouraged would would not be supported by staff. In a quicker process review. Next slide, please. This was a primary point of emphasis with the design review board was especially on the public street, creating a sense of rhythm. Along the cars. And so this graphic here, although inventory helps to convey that they're looking at having. A standard rhythm or buffer zone that borders the edge of those decks and the outer edge of the street. So that zone would be. Identified by concrete planners or other traffic rated materials to help. Provide an additional space and sense of protection from vehicle traffic. And if we can go to the next slide. So following our second design review, so the designer view board. Did not have an opportunity to look at these, but one of their feedback points was to look at getting a standardized template or blueprint. That businesses could look at to follow. This is the first round of that. I worked with our or reached out to. Our environmental or landscape consultant, Pat Murphy with SMP Environmental. And his group produced these. There's an Anglin version and we'll look in just a second at a parallel parking version. And I do want to emphasize again, designer view had not looked at this. So I've already reached out to Pat to highlight a couple of things that did not align directly with. The design review recommendation. So alternative B, for instance, does still include those overhanging market lights. And while there are some some trees shown here, what he has, if you look at the callouts that were in your attachments. It shows a curbing like a curb stop as the outer perimeter and the designer view board was preferring the larger. Concrete planters and and that's what is still specified within the design guidelines. So there'll be some modifications to this, but I think that it helps to convey the direction that we are looking at going to provide a clear. Here's your blueprint option for businesses that would be interested in participating. And then if we can go to the next slide. This shows the parallel parking context and I didn't mention in the prior slide. This is covered also within the guidelines and the proposed amendment language. The designer review board thought that three Anglin parking spaces should be a maximum for business and then two. Parallel parking stalls. So that's what's reflected within these images here and. I think we can go ahead and move on to the next slide. Thank you. So now we're shifting into discussion and I'll slow down a bit since I've exited the background. And we're looking now at what does our code currently say? What are some challenges there and what could an amendment look like? So the current outdoor dining section of our code is contained within 17 to 8205 of our municipal code. A few bullet points here highlight what that code section covers. It allows for permanent expanded outdoor dining. The general plan is supportive of outdoor dining already because it brings in a pedestrian element, especially to our downtown area. But this code section does specify that for certain. Permanent outdoor dining expansions, a public hearing is required. And there are some limitations to a more widespread adoption amongst businesses. A few of those could be that outdoor areas are are not permitted currently to encroach into required parking areas. Outdoor areas may be limited to restaurant uses only. So some of what we saw within the pandemic. Context would not have been permitted. So bars, tasting rooms, coffee shops would not meet the context of a restaurant. And so that limitation may also be a challenge for businesses to adopt. And then seat limitations, outdoor dining areas may need to provide additional parking. And there's a table that references those parking standards. And then tables and chairs on public property, if an outdoor area proposes to use public property, have to be removed nightly. So those are just a few of the existing code standards within 17 to 8205. We go to the next one. And obviously there is much more information contained within attachment three to the staff report. That outlines the proposed insertion of a new section 17 to 8206. To be very clear, this section is a temporary section that would sunset automatically at the end of 2023 concurrent with. The enabling legislation timeframes. The goal of this section would be to establish a check the boxes style regulation regulatory system for. Temporary outdoor dining. It would create a standard blueprint for layouts and. There are certain modifications within that code section that would require D R S E review. So if you recall back to the guidelines where there was encouraged and discouraged. If an applicant is looking at doing something that's that falls under discouraged, that's not like a clear streamlined, this fits the blueprint. Then they would not have an over the counter type review. It's something that would fall under an exceptions process. And then finally, the the draft language would allow any food and beverage business to participate. We can go to the next slide. So that wraps up the the discussion or the the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. I know that there's a lot of information in front of you, but hopefully we can have some successful discussions evening.
Um, Commissioner Camp. Would these be required to have building permits typically?
So if the development was on private property, they would require a building permit. And in the private or in the public right of way, we would not require a building permit.
Okay, so along Del Mar where they're encroaching in parking, no permit required.
So the thinking on that would be that we create again within that checklist context, a parklet permit. And so the the intent would be to issue a parklet permit where there is still an inspection. To validate, for instance, some especially the clear line drainage is an example where there's a minimum six by six inch. Currently within the draft language where they are checking off their meeting those standards.
Okay, and it says a sunset of 2023. We didn't, I remember I was talking about that. I know this is considered temporary. But if a business owner spends, you know, quite a bit of money. To implement this and and have a parkland, are they required to take it out or is it, is it, how's that work?
Yeah, so in conjunction with the. Proposed amendment, the business owners would also enter into a license agreement with the city. That allows them for to access and use that public space that would. Align with this amendment and the, so that my response is yes, they would be expected to remove. The outdoor dining decks at the end of that period. There's is, there is an option to pursue a longer permanent ordinance. And and I did reference in some of the code language of permanent ordinance that San Diego recently adopted. But we would, if we are looking at a permanent expansion of outdoor dining, need to go through the full environmental and coastal commission reviews.
Okay, and those those exception, I'm sorry, those limitations, they would apply for more permanent. Okay. Yeah, I think something to consider on that particular question is that. The road's going to be resurfaced in 2023.
There is a fun, yeah, there's a fun.
Capital improvement that's already been done and it's got to go to the curb gutter. So. They're going to have to get out of the way for that. I got a question that. We're trying to amend our. Zoning code, which actually works pretty well right now for outdoor dining implementation. Was it ever considered to do this as a unique? Special events permit. Where it would be one year daylight. And these guidelines could be attached to that special definition of outdoor dining on. Del Mar and whatever streets it is, because this doesn't address. People who are using their own parking lots, etc. So that's going to have to be handled again in some other manner. So maybe changing the zoning code itself. Isn't appropriate until we get those figured out also. Could it be done with a one-year special events permit? Which goes through city manager and staff review. And doesn't. I mean, the fees can be waived, however. Is that a viable option possibly?
So a couple of responses. First, I would say within the draft 17 to 8206, there is a section on private. It's not as developed as the public section. There are some regular regulations that are proposed within there. Second, I think that the special event permit and to clarify for the commission, there's two types of special event permits. There's. And when we say special event, that actually refers to anything that's on public property, including in the city street. And then special activities would be anything that's on private property.
Look at one for public property.
Yeah, so within the public property, that's typically managed by our beaches, parks and recreation division. And honestly, Chair, I would need to look into that a little bit more since that's not a permit that I typically process. Our special activities has a limit of only a maximum of 15 days in a calendar year. I don't know that that same limit would apply for special events, but I'd have to review that.
And my thought that would be a lot easier to change than. A whole bunch of things in zoning codes because we're going to be asked to make a fine. Going through the zoning code option. And since there's no reference to the downtown parking study and all, and the fact. It's not even addressed. It would be hard to make the finding that in fact this. I don't think we have to do it doing that on the. Conditional, the special event.
Okay, I will take a look at that.
Because I had mentioned to everyone previously to take a look at this and. The. Most impacted currently parking on Del Mar is obviously the tight parking in front of the spaces. And it already is 90% occupied numerous days of the year and 90%. Is considered 100% by the parking studies to the fact that. That 10% is people coming in and out and reparking. So it's totally used and we're going to take. Potentially a third of that away. So there's a big impact that needs to be addressed. Where are they going to go? Are they going to go take the library parking? So nobody can get into the library. We need to consider that when approving. These and I want to make sure we discuss that. Pay attention to.
Is the assembly bill and senate bill, is that mandatory?
No.
So it's not shall, it's we can if we want. That same. You know, issues about parking because sometimes I can't even park to this meeting. Just all the time.
It's something we need to address and, you know, it may be that each another concern is. We have restaurants that are fully parked. We have restaurants that are fully parked on their own, plus have taken advantage of 16 additional. Outdoor dining seats without having produced parking. We have restaurants that are underparked and restaurants that have. Either purchased parking agreements or have waivers. So do each of those get looked at equally? Or is it on their impact to existing parking because we're adding up to 16 seats? Which is four part, up to four parking spaces. So ones that have already taken advantage of that would be eight spaces alone. Where ones that have not taken advantage of that would only be four spaces long. So we need to make it equitable for every single. Business that somebody isn't being treated. Over generously to the other ones, so. Yeah, I think I saw when I was reading in here, there was something about a fee. That's going to be charged. For use, I guess, but it was pretty vague. I mean, I I assume we're going to get a little more. Distinctive about how that's going to apply.
Yeah, so I will be supplying some additional information on that. I've been looking at other cities and talking to BBK. So we would have to apply a fee based off of square footage basis. So. There's not a determination yet on what the best landing spot of that will be, but that will be a part of the revision that comes back to you. And the same process would apply as on as was under the temporary operations where. All the fees that were collected went back into operations of the trolley. So the Saturday, Sunday service. Between October, November, December was covered by those fees that were collected and I am envisioning the same type of process.
I was going to say San Diego is the city that already has implemented a permanent.
Correct, yes.
Even beyond the senate bill.
Correct.
But they have parking structures. Right?
Correct, yes, so they, I mean, they're.
So they've got a place to put the cars when they take them off the street, doing parking structure. Here, we take spots off the street. We have nowhere to go. We kept the library parking lot.
Library parking lot and the residential streets.
Question on dimensions of the traffic rated protection. Question on dimensions of the traffic rated protection. Describe what materials are, are they K rails, rocks?
Yeah, so it's a concrete planter and the typical dimensions that we were considering were a height of thirty inches. And those most often, there's different uh, versions um, that can be used, the rectangular or circular. Um, the designer view uh, border was had a preference for the rectangular. Uh, and so the a standard dimension would be thirty inches in height. And then uh, you may have the the lengths can vary, uh, but for sake of discussion, forty-eight inches long. And a couple of feet deep.
And so that would be on the outside, does that encroach on the right away?
Correct, so that would be placed essentially at the outer edge of where the parking striping is. So it would be within the parking striping, the thought being that um, different than what was in existence during uh, the past two years. Uh, the decks would actually be pulled closer to the sidewalk and that um, space would be used for the planters instead. All contained within the parking spot.
Okay, one other comment, I think that um. I didn't mention, I think we need to, let's let's address the aesthetics part that Jonathan approved. So he has direction on that. And then we can uh, as a second discussion, we can discuss uh, things like number of. Seats, et cetera, and um, we don't have to do both simultaneously. So anybody have comments on the aesthetic part of uh, the presentation?
Yeah, just piggybacking on the last question, so is the idea behind the planners? Not just aesthetic, but it's also safety vehicular safety. So if we did have an, some mishap with it, it's gonna impact these planters. And that should be contain that vehicle, that's the idea?
Correct, that's the intent.
Okay, so that's a good idea for the safety. I I I think that's really important. Um, and I suppose that the staff would then. Have a process for that applicant to place them or how is that gonna work so that there's consistency? There may need to be like forklifts involved to put them in place, so is that gonna be part of the process?
Yeah, that will need to be part of the process because given their their weight, that is gonna be something that we have to coordinate with the Public Works Division.
Okay, um, the other thing is about the overhead lighting, I I, the spirit of that makes sense to me. But I would hate to lose the ambiance that 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 kind of string lighting provides. Uh, for something that's more of a floodlight, I don't know, what is the design review committee's opinion about? Did you guys discuss that? The harsher lighting versus the softer lighting and?
We did have, um, three of us um, had varying opinions on it. One is this is a historic district and we're trying to keep these from taking over. And deterring from historic facades on many of the buildings. Um, but uh, why don't the two other members?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that briefly. Typically, the overhead lights are sort of a cheap solution with with um, you know. A direct light source that's visible that creates a glare field. Um, and that's what we're trying to avoid. We'd rather have safe, you know, enough light for safety. And light that you don't actually see the source, so it creates a sort of a glowing effect at that deck. And when people are putting these lights up, a lot of times they're moving them around. I mean, it's, it becomes very. Noisy and if if you understand what I mean in terms of just the effect from the lighting. And when we talked about it, we felt like Del Mar is very eclectic already with the facades. I mean, it's, it's, there's no real, you know, I hate to say this, but real rhyme or reason to the development of a lot of the facades. Though there are some historic um, benefits, so what we try to do is use this as an opportunity. To create some identity and some rhythm along Del Mar. To kind of uh, you know, normalize it a little bit. And that, I think the lighting just in itself is a, is a really big deal.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, because you, it's tough to control. The overhead lights, I mean, where do you string them from? Where do you string them to? You put them in trees, you put, you know, it's just, that's, that's a tough one, so we wanted, we, I think, I I think we, I thought we were in agreement. That we wanted to discourage that. Scott, was that?
Well, and then also there was the power source issue, so there was a preference for solar powered. Lighting as opposed to, you know, plug-in. Lighting as well.
So will the um. Applicant have free rein or are we going to, like, here's a menu? There's, we've looked at this, we've solved the problem for you, these are ten things or five things that we've, will work for you. Pick any one of them. Is it gonna work like that?
Yeah, so the thinking is that they're speaking to the the menu, that they would be able to um, select, for instance, from umbrellas. Uh, a seven to nine foot umbrella and I don't need to, or staff doesn't need to look at whatever particular umbrella you order from. Whether it's Lowe's or Amazon, as long as it falls into those dimensional criteria. So the goal is that there's some flexibility for them to choose unique character uh, characteristics, but that as long as they fall within the permitted dimensions, et cetera.
Right, so as far as the lighting though, I mean, that seems tricky to me and I feel like. Like in here it says something about, you know, the, the, the rating of the lighting, like thirty-five hundred Kelvin and stuff like that. I mean, people are gonna go on Amazon thirty-five K and try and figure this out or it just. I get the idea that we're trying to bring some kind of consistency and I think it's good. That we're trying to consider the warmth of it and all of that and not have spill and glare. I just would think that it would be more of an advantage if we could provide some prescriptive guidance. So that merchants aren't just on Amazon trying to figure this out and then you don't really get what you are hoping you get.
And and we are trying to do that.
Um, okay.
The other thing is we all, so um, lighting in the city is supposed to be shielded. Well, those are the most unshielded lights you can have uh, up there, so we're looking more at uh, some post cap lighting. Which works well, it floods the areas and uh, um, anything lower than that.
Yeah, we do have, you know, during the holidays, I think those trees down are wrapped.
Yep.
And I don't know if that's consistent with your ideas here, but that people seem to enjoy that effect. So maybe there's an exception if they want to have those wrapped around the tree. I don't know, what, if you guys considered that?
Yeah, I think we all, what we are proposing is a kind of a kit of parts. So we're not gonna design these, you know, for them, but there's enough direction. That I think, and there are even some specified light fixtures, I think that we showed on there, that they could default to. Um, but I think there needs to be a little bit of leeway in terms of creating identity for a particular um, business. Um, without having everyone the same, everyone be the same along there, so there's kind of a balance, I think, that we were looking at. As we came up with this.
And we all did approach it, um, these are temporary.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't want to get too crazy fancy. And uh, my concern always was if we do look at um. The possibility of permanent uh, parklets. Uh, this isn't probably the way we design them.
Gotcha.
So uh, you know, saying, well, we'll just continue it. Well, the ideal situation is not to be serving across the sidewalk. The idea then would be to have um, the sidewalk outside the dining. Which would be the typical um, sidewalk dining. So um, this is a temporary solution and uh, we don't want to incur such a price. That uh, it's economically unfeasible to uh.
Yeah, exactly.
Enjoy this.
Yeah, I think, otherwise, I think you guys did a great job, the decking and flush with the curb, allowing for the, you know, water to flow underneath. And the railing and the materials that you're suggesting all look great to me. I think you did a great job on that, so thank you to this upcoming for that. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a section on when you're icing that I'm not looking at as far as heating elements, when arising, when rising, the heating elements?
When arising? No, I don't believe there is.
So are heaters allowed, not allowed?
Yeah, so.
Heaters are allowed, but there, I think it's under seven feet is, but uh, so it's the small tower kind rather than the big credit kind.
So there's a discussion of that on page seven of the draft guidelines.
Oh, there it is, shade and heat, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other question on aesthetics?
I have a question or just a a comment on these um. Summer Murphy landscape exhibits that we haven't seen before. He's got a lot of landscape materials plugged in there, which is something that we talked about, it seems like that'd be. Pretty costly for the merchants to, to do. Also, he's got trees shown which. Would block visibility to the, to the stores and restaurants and buildings behind. So I think that stuff needs to be stripped out.
I would agree and and I uh, didn't touch on that in my PowerPoint, but it was listed uh, as a recommendation to remove the additional trees for that reason. That uh, and to explain to everyone else, there was a uh, discussion about limiting. And this tied into the overhead lighting as well, but just to limit any elements above um, railing height above thirty inches. To necessary only, so umbrellas and heaters and even limiting the number of those elements.
I think that's a good approach.
They're landscape architects, yeah, to draw trees.
Exactly. Temples, so just paste in there. Um, anything else, Mr. Preston? Okay, um.
The only thing I would just, is a, is a kind of a random thought, but we just need to make sure that those planters, which are really important for safety, are visible at night. So that we don't have side swiping and then people coming up to the city saying, you can't see these things. So I don't know how we do deal with that, but you know, I don't know if we put reflectors on them or there seems to be some thought given to. Visibility at it after dark would be my, it's just a thought.
We had talked about reflectors on like the lead one, if there's a series of them in a row.
Yeah.
Put it on the lead one.
Okay, that certainly is a concern and uh. Uh, they are within the parking phase themselves, so they're, they're not protruding out any further than a car would.
Yeah.
Probably less than my truck would, yeah, um, but uh.
And I did within the draft guidelines, page five and section says buffer zone include a note that they should require a reflective stripper button on those planters.
Excellent, great.
Okay, let's now discuss um. How many would be.
Chair Grandle, yes, just before we move on, I just want to remind the commission that we have a number of speaker cards.
How many do we have?
We have uh, three so far.
And can you control the timer from there?
Uh, I I can start a timer, or actually, we we can control the timer. Yes, I I just wanted to bring it up.
Siri's got the magic button, okay. I wanted to bring it up, let's go ahead and normally we would have the discussion after the presentation before our discussion, so. But let's, let's hear, yeah, okay.
All right, the first speaker is Mickey Rathman. And this will be, she'll be followed by Mark McGuire and Chris Aiken.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my name's Mickey Rathman. I'm a local resident as well as a local business owner of Mickey's on Del Mar, uh, on Avenue to Del Mar here in San Clemente. Having the outdoor dining during the pandemic was definitely a help and a blessing um, to our community and the downtown businesses. As we are hopefully leaving uh, the more, you know, restricted nature of our lives of the pandemic and we're returning to a little bit of a normal life. Having some outdoor dining uh, is really a nice thing. But I want to make sure that we're taking into consideration all the businesses and not just the benefit of the restaurants. So for example, during the pandemic, my business was a hundred percent blocked by an outdoor dining deck. Because the restaurant next to me, very lovely and I want them to succeed. They weren't able to put their deck in front of their own restaurant, so it was in front of my business. So I'm urging the planning commission to please, as you're looking at these guidelines, to make sure that the parklets. Don't encroach onto any other businesses that they're only placed in front of the restaurants. The business that these parklets are benefiting. Additionally, and while it was during the pandemic, so I know it's a little bit hard to compare. Not all of the outdoor dining decks were used regularly, that a number of the decks were left vacant for multiple days in a row. Where restaurants, once they were allowed to serve indoors, weren't using them. So I don't know if you will return like we did towards the end of the outdoor dining program in twenty twenty-one. Having some guidelines of the hours of which the parklets must must be open. So that the restaurants must serve there a certain number of hours, a certain number of days of week. So that it does help with the vitality um, and them looking occupied. So thank you very much um, for taking into consideration all businesses um, benefits and not just the restaurants. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let me ask you one quick question. So your restaurant was um, down by what, Bistro?
So I don't have a restaurant, I have a retail store.
Retail stores down?
Yes.
I want a little parkings with the bench in it where.
Exactly, yeah, next to Brussels Bistro and because they have uh, disabled parking spaces and a driveway, I think. And that little benchy, you know, deal in front of their restaurant, they weren't allowed to put their outdoor deck there.
Okay.
So it had to get bumped down, which then unfortunately blocked.
Said that they are gonna have to somehow figure out a way to put them in front of each of the.
Yeah, and this is something that would be valuable for the commission to discuss, because one of the challenges. Um, you know, I think that we did hear designer view that there was a consistent uh, this scenario uh, by Mickey's was referenced a few times. Especially in regards to the height of an element, there was also a fixed wall at that location. And so um, identifying that we don't want that context was uh, clearly heard by designer view. Um, one of the challenges of having a strict um, frontage is that we do have angled parking. And so there's gonna be almost in every situation, some level of um, you know, parking spaces that overlap multiple frontages. Uh, we, I did propose within this, we did not allow for use of ADA spaces uh, during the temporary program. Um, I I left a caveat within the proposal here where um, a business could pay. Uh, for the temporary relocation. Uh, we did have that a comparable version with a relocation of temporary parking spaces. Uh, so the um, that would be one avenue to address these challenges. There were a couple of restaurants that had that context where um, they, they did not have a usable space directly in front of them. So in trying to accommodate that, uh, we came into this challenge that uh, Ms. Rathman's mentioning.
Thank you. Mark.
Good evening, again, Mark McGuire, uh, San Clemente resident. And also I represent uh, John McKinley, the owner of La Galette, which is one of the restaurants down in the Pier Bowl. And I've used this, uh, I've told this story before. Daniel Webster, when he testified in front of the Supreme Court on a famous case. Early on in the Republic, he was talking about Dartmouth College and he said it's a small college, but there are those that love it. That's how we feel about the little cluster of restaurants down in the Pier Bowl. It's small, but there are those who love it. And uh, it really has a lot of different issues than what you're facing on Del Mar, frankly, it's not. It's not diagonal parking, the frontage actually wasn't parking at all in front of this area. And and it's worked out so well that the city uh, council authorized a CIP improvement. To ultimately expand the sidewalk on that side to permanently have outdoor dining in that area. And so we fought to keep the outdoor dining um, going, it's going even now, um, and we appreciated that. Um, I, we continue to think that it works well and we think it has its own set of subset of issues that are different from. Uh, Del Mar that frankly, we, we think it may be worth doing a carve-out in the same way that probably there's carve-outs for the private parking lots. So I look forward to working with uh, Jonathan, we were the first ones to get a permit. Uh, it's always great to work with Jonathan, he's done a great job on, on this program. I think it was a great success. I know there were bumps in the road. Um, I enjoyed the parking um, as a, I mean, the outlet outside dining. As a resident, uh, specifically on the number of spaces, uh, Chairman Grandle, you're, I know there's been this reference to sixteen. I just would tell you that for La Galette, for example, they've used none of their indoor dining during the life of this outdoor dining. It's uh, the outdoor dining is, is all of their seating now. And so maybe there's opportunities for flexibility like that, where if you're not using your indoor seats. And you can dedicate them and they fit comfortably within the outside that you can use the outside seating. But uh, those are things that I hope to continue to work on, work with you. Those are things that I hope to continue to work on, work with your staff and we'll be back here when you're actually making a recommendation on that.
Look forward to it. Do we have another card?
Chris Aiken.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Chris Aiken, I am the. For the last several years have been the chair of the San Clemente Downtown Business Association and have really had the privilege to. Work and collaborate with the city during the COVID emergency order that brought outdoor dining. And I'd like to, we've also done various callouts by exactly times etcetera, got a lot of feedback that we've shared with the planning commission. By correspondence and by. By the information we have provided. I would say based on the feedback that we received, it's been overwhelming as relates to helping all business sectors here in the downtown area. That, you know, restaurants, retail and service industries, it's not just a restaurant thing because what the outdoor dining has provided. Is really more of an ambiance and down to ambiance and destination for our downtown to really help business across all the sectors, that's what we have found. Based on all the reports that 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 we have heard. It only brings an ambiance, people stay longer to shop and also we've heard from. From the the restaurants and retail that when they're in the outdoor dining, they actually notice new new retails that they actually haven't noticed before and they they stay longer in downtown to shop. There's also a lot of other benefits as relates to. Tangent tangent benefits that I mentioned in our correspondence at the San Clemente Downtown Business Association, so. We're fully in support of the program and we're really appreciative of working with the city to. During this time and and I really appreciate that the time the planning commission has. Put forth to do standards, so we don't have issues such as that that Mickey mentions, we have actually consistency. There has to be flexibility because because the truth of the matter is every restaurant is different and the city has worked really hard to. To assist. All the sectors with this program and I would certainly encourage. The planning commission to continue to do so, we are and we're really appreciative of your efforts, so. Thank you very much for your time on this and we really appreciate it if that relates to the San Clemente Downtown Business Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cards?
Those those are all the cards that we've.
Now, we did receive, I think, one email, at least I received one email from. Downtown Business Association talking about the. Requesting that we. Consider how this will impact the. The fundraiser. For their Fiesta downtown and also the car show. And how these are going to impact those and. I don't have an answer for that right now, but it's something we need to consider, certainly.
Yes, just for the record, there was a written communication that was forwarded to all the planning commissioners.
Okay.
If there are direct questions about that, staff can look into that matter and. Provide any information we have.
Mr. I think the point of that was the planning effort that they go through to. Create vendor spots and then they sell them and then if a parklet pops up. To a spot they sold, there's gonna be some. Scrambling to figure out how do they accommodate that vendor and. So I think it's just the staff having awareness that they're just looking to have certainty where they can place the booths. And then sell it. And then the day of the event. It's accessible and and not, oh, I sold this to you, but there's a parklet there, sorry, you're out. That they want to avoid that, I think that's their main concern.
Yeah. And also the car show, they're gonna lose forty two slots for. Cars etcetera and have. Things to consider. Whether it. Changes our point of view or not, that's. Whole nother discussion. Any discussion on? One thing the code has always said. Restaurants with thirty two or less seats. They were granting them only eight. Outdoor dining seats. About limiting the number of seats based on the size of restaurant. Made sense during the COVID crisis. Because they lost more seats obviously inside than the other ones. But does a small restaurant that has. Thirty seats deserve sixteen outside and taking away. Three parking stalls. And should we limit it at sixteen total in our discussions with restaurant? Operators at our design review. They seem pretty comfortable with that number. That it didn't need to necessarily exceed that. Jonathan, was that your take on their comments at the meetings, I know I think it was the. Manager of El Rancho.
Yeah, and so that was the one specific response we got was from the manager at El Rancho that he would be supportive of the sixteen.
So, you know, rather than just pumping out and moving them from the inside of the building outside, because there's no way we can monitor. Whether they use all their seats inside as well as outside, that's something. You can't enforce. So we should probably make this kind of self enforcing by. Doing appropriate number.
Was the hours of operation considered?
Not yet. If you'd like, well, Mr. Preston brought up the. Hours of operation that they shouldn't sit vacant and not be used. And. It's a concern, I don't know how we address.
Yeah, I don't know how you could, how could you enforce that?
I'm not sure.
I suspect the fifteen days in a row are probably cold. Cold days.
There will certainly be days they're they're not used because of weather. Or staffing, that's that's probably more of the driving force right now. It's hard to staff for the inside and have approved for the outside. Be able to get them there. Do you have any ideas on?
Yeah, I think if you make the parklet inviting. And if you have staff, I know staffing is is an issue. Another question, and again, I I read through this, but are we? Discouraging electrical or is there?
Right now would have to be overhead, there's no electrical out to the curb. So we were looking, well, how to? How did they solve it before? Because we don't want cords going across the. Sidewalk and, you know, try to tape them down and have people trip along. I suppose there could be a major condo, but it'd be probably off a city. Power source, metered source. But engineering can come up with an adequate solution to getting power there where it's not visible. A problem. They don't have to be solar if there's a better solution.
Commissioners, just on on that item. The topic of having private parties tap into the city's. Electric boxes along Del Mar has come up on multiple projects in the past and. Typically, the city typically discourages that, we want them to use their own.
Addresses that now. So it would have to come from their source and. For a one year temporary thing, I don't see. Trying to underground something from your building to the curb, it makes sense, so. And solar will keep the lights on. In the summer till after midnight during the winter, probably up till ten o'clock.
We get a lot of sunshine in the winter too. I've got solar. Lights at my property and. They're on all night.
Yeah, with fresh batteries, they will last all night.
Yeah.
Right now, restaurants are have no restrictions, right? Are there any restrictions besides the masks?
Currently, no, they are not losing any seats.
Right. They're not. I'm having a hard time. If they're able to occupy their inside space or their space that they've been allowed before the pandemic. And the governor still hasn't declared that there's no emergency. And we have parking problems. Why are we?
It's about, it's a valid argument, absolutely.
I don't quite, I haven't quite made that.
It's an amenity and. And that's why I think we're looking at it for short term, I think. City council or maybe. Mayor James can address this, I think we were looking at. Doing it as a bit of a thank you for getting through the pandemic and serving the town, but.
Well, I think it's.
It's pure benefit to them now that they're not replacing parking and. The lack of parking is going to be accentuated big time. If they can. Fill all their seats in the restaurant and have the outdoor dining, it's a. It's not what we've seen in the last two years happen in tax. Back parking. It's gonna be certainly more acute.
I think it's, you know, the the idea what came from the state level and from the city council is that it's overwhelmingly popular. With the residents. So. I think that's kind of the part of the motivation. I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Regarding the parklet permits, are there insurance requirements that the restaurant? You know. Indemnifies the city?
Yes, there are and we had insurance requirements in place also during the pandemic. But that's going to be covered, there's a reference to that on page ten of the guidelines and it is referenced specifically within the the draft amendment language as well. So we require that they provide proof of insurance, the city requires commercial general liability, personal injury and property damage. Of a combined liability limit up to a million dollars, there's some additional language within that section, but yes, we do require that.
Okay, thank you, regarding the number of seats allowed out in the parklet, I'm okay with. I don't. I personally don't. Feel like we should restrict it, I don't feel like we should police it. So if it couldn't fit reasonable amount of seats and however big their parklet is, I'm okay with that. Mickey brought up a. A prickly point about putting the parklet in front of retail and with the angled angled spots. That seems like kind of. You know, there's just always going to be judgment calls. So I don't know how we. I'm supportive of of. Keeping the frontage to the retail open, but if a if an angled spot overlaps it partially. Then maybe that should be allowed.
I only thought there is. Does every single restaurant have the right? To have these parklets? At the expense, these are. And I'm not sure that every single one warrants it, particularly when you say seats and parking. If they put. Thirty seats out there. That's six more parking spaces that are people are looking for parking spaces. And we don't have, according to the downtown parking study. To do that, we got to limit it somehow. Or everybody who complies, all these businesses that comply with their parking. Or paying for parking. Aren't getting any benefit. And public parking is being taken away from it. And that's one of the biggest balancing acts we've got to do, I think, to. Make sure that. Right now, the diagonal parking is full, period, it is full and it's going so.
It's it's full on certain peak days and hours.
For some of the public parking lots, pretty much on Del Mar, other than before stores open. It's especially during the summer, it's full and they say ninety percent is full. And we got, I think it's a hundred and. Forty two. Stalls and we're taking forty two stalls. So there's an impact and the balancing act is, are we comfortable with? Having more traffic on Del Mar, period. Because they're going to be driving around looking for a parking stall. Or do we have to get the city to? Step up to the plate and take the recommendations of the downtown parking study. And there's all sorts of options and studies and leasing some of the private spaces. To become public spaces out of the lots. And I don't think. Cecilia? Has anything been done to follow any of the recommendations from the? Nineteen eight, the two thousand eighteen parking study? Or because of everything going on, has it just been kind of on the back?
We did establish a parking action team, just an internal group made up of.
Supposed to be four times a month a year. Quarterly.
See. If there is anything. Put the brakes on that in twenty twenty when everything is going on, so. The group still meets, I'm not sure how much activity is.
Because I think this impacts it so much, they kind of need to be dubbed it. And addressed because. Otherwise. Haven't done our due diligence to coordinate parking with retail.
Do we know that the all the restaurants down there would? Use parklets, are we certain that they would take advantage of them all or are we looking?
We we don't know that, I think they're going to evaluate that when they see the cost involved for one year.
I I don't think they all will and I think the the parking will.
Yeah, that is definitely. An unknown, we were given a at design review. A potential. Number of. Parklets if all took. Advantage of it.
There's going to be fees involved, they have to invest in materials, it's only going to be for another year. So I have a feeling. Not based on anything else other than what we have here that not all restaurants will take advantage of that.
I would probably agree with you on that now that they've got their dining inside.
Dining inside and they can't have their.
Jonathan may have a better feel for that since he's been talking with.
Well, yeah, so I just wanted to add a related thought that addressed the commissioners prior comment on. You know, how regularly those spaces are used. Staff's thought is that, you know, with these specifications and some additional investment required where a deck is required. The landscape buffers are required that that will remove a number of spaces. From participating and a number of those who did not invest in a deck were some of those spaces that were irregularly used. So I think that we would see some improvement of. That because we're only because there's the buy in element at play.
I think it's very positive. But we certainly need to take into consideration the businesses that aren't restaurants down there. And as Mickey stated that. I think you said that you enjoyed it. At the same time, your business was blocked, that was certainly unfortunate. I have to say that I didn't even know you were there until I walked down and participated in one of the restaurants, like, oh, look. It was actually very nice. The vendor spots, I can see that that would be also a problem, but. Overall, I would be in supportive of what the design review has come up with. I think it's a work in progress. Maybe add subtract a few things. I know that regulating hours of use might be overstepping, but you know, if they're going to make an investment. They're going to use it. So at the same time, I see a lot of foot traffic down there when the parklets were up and people were enjoying the outdoor restaurants. And they're certainly enjoying them down in the Pier Bowl. And I see that that is a different. A a different venue down there and possibly a carve out would be warranted for that area. You already have a large parking lot. And. The dining is is limited to that one space there. So I could see going forward, maybe looking at a carve out there. Everyone seems to be have a positive. Approach to this, even even the business that was blocked, if we can be responsible. And I think it will work itself out. Temporary and there is an investment. Of decent materials.
Possible. And Jonathan, if if it's possible to do have either downtown Business Association do a survey. And ask the question, you know, if. You gotta spend. Five, ten, ten grand, five, ten grand, whatever it is for this deck, is that something you would consider doing or not? Because right now it's speculation and.
And insurance, they have to buy extra insurance.
And a monthly fee.
Monthly fee.
On top of that.
And there are no more. And there are no more PPP loans. So here's, it's, it's it's just coming right out of the bottom line. But if they're going to make that investment, if there must be a good reason for it because
But if you let them keep their inside seats and make permanent their outside seats and give them the expansion, right? And the use of public property.
At a price.
Well, at what kind of price? They got the extra seats also. I don't want to give them a gift of public funds. I mean, it was supposed to be used for parking spaces.
And, and our, our job is to look at this as a a land use issue. It's up to city council to make the business call on this of, of business basis. So on a land use decision.
Could be possibly giving them an expansion of like five to six spots or even more from what they were allowed in their original application.
That's correct.
Their restaurant. And how is that fair that other restaurants may not have the same opportunity?
Well, this is not permanent, right? I mean, we're still talking about a sunset.
A temporary one, but even temporary, that is certainly a concern. And this wouldn't be the design that a city planner or landscape architect would want to design for a permanent street dining and cafe. That would require new curbs, new would be a tech out on the street. Justify giving it to someone on Del Mar and somebody on El Camino couldn't do it out in the public right away. I would pass that along to city council. I'd pass it on to city attorney.
I think they have bicycle lanes and you can't approach on that. Is that correct?
Not currently on Del Mar, but there are places that would be affected.
Well, we've only talked about Del Mar, but there are other restaurants that have, you know, inquired and, and relatively specifically relative to parking lot tables and so forth.
And we're going to have to address that as a separate issue because that's not addressed in this document. We're looking at the T-zone and pier bowl.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
And isolated to just that, right?
Yeah.
But
The writers club came to talk to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say one more thing, and that's that I think this is actually an opportunity since it is temporary to look and see how it does work. Cause I think these limitations in terms of you got to, you've got to put up some funding privately to be able to use them. And I know it was informal, but we did have a couple, I think it was the Business Association attended at least one of our DRSC meetings and said they've informally surveyed and found that a lot of people are actually not interested in using them. So I mean, I think it's, you know, the temporary nature of this thing is gives us that kind of an opportunity.
Yeah.
To see how it works.
Concept. I mean, cities evolve, right? Del Mar's going to evolve. It's not always going to stay the way it is and walkability, access, these are growing things and popularity, you know, some cities are taking streets like Del Mar and are closing them to traffic altogether.
That's been considered in this town, but it unfortunately you direct the traffic through residential.
No, I understood. I'm just saying that I think this is a good step forward for the community and it, it just, I think that what's the important is administration. The standards I think you, we have, they're good. They look good. The administration could, is where we might get, you know, bogged down. I, what I understand here is we're saying there's going to be, we're going to put some limits on this, right? So there's forty-two spaces maximum that would be provided for this use, right? And once they're, they're gone, they're gone.
An arbitrary number by a proposal presented to us by I don't think it even says on here anymore. It was given to the DRSC.
So that to me, that, that's where I'm kind of at this point is administration of it. Cause I do, I'm just reading here where it says eligibility, maximum forty-two spaces. And as, so that's what it says is that what, what we're saying that we're going to put a cap on it and it's kind of first come, first serve administratively?
So the design review board did have a preference of having a limitation in place. There's obviously some natural limitations, a lot of retail on Del Mar. So it's not, not every business would be applying. Forty-two is pretty reflective of what was in place during the pandemic. So that was a starter number, that number, you know, the planning commission can absolutely opine on a different number if they think.
Yeah, I don't know how it came to it, but I mean, I think having a limit is a, is a good thing, right? To have it be, this is the maximum we want to do because there's an impact on parking. So I don't think we can just make it unlimited. I think there should be some guidelines, guide rails to manage it and have a balance so that there is still parking. So we should maybe consider passing on to the city council regarding like, we do recommend these guide rails in terms of administration that we would limit it to, you know, if forty-two is the right number, then that's the number. I did get confused under the parking study section where we were talking about three spaces is the maximum or we're waiving some, some where that's, we're going to allow that permit by administration only. I did not see all that squared. I was kind of thinking what you were trying to say here is that's the max for out for a parklet is three spaces. Is that right?
That's pretty much what we're looking at because then that also limits the seats that can be
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So I think we should quantify that as a guideline, you know, that this is the max the parklet could be. I don't know if you would entertain a smaller one, you know? I was just also confused by this maximum allowance of the hundred eighty waivers. I didn't know where the waivers factored into this.
Thrown in kind of in the parking study downtown. When you consider all the public lots and all, which aren't necessarily close by
Yeah.
these restaurants and whatnot. There were going to be, I think, ninety waivers allowed. And that's when a small store comes in, only has six stalls, but their square footage says you should have eight. Okay, they would grant two waivers, saying, okay, there's enough public parking around you that sixes do it and you can get your operating permit.
So it's really separate from this discussion.
Pretty much.
So yeah, if I could comment on that quickly, the subcommittee was interested in when, when this came forward to planning commission, they didn't focus on the parking element. But when it came forward to having a tie to parking standards that exist within the code, to be clear, the state legislation does not require that. So we would have the flexibility to establish any planning commission can make any recommendation they want as far as waivers of parking. But our, our code allows for an administrative waiver of up to three spaces in the downtown area and, and up to a maximum of a hundred and eighty spaces. Chair Crandall referenced the ninety. There's a threshold and this comes from our code section seventeen, six, four, one, two, five that says the city should, once we pass the ninety, do another survey of the parking constraints within the downtown. So I did reference that within the staff report that, you know, if we move forward in this direction of if the planning commission, the hearing were to support this, it may be a good recommendation to the city council to budget for that study to review when this temporary expansion is in place. What does the parking look like? And maybe even evaluate overflow beyond just Del Mar so that there's that scope that we can use again. Commissioner Cameron referenced proof of concept that we then have some data moving forward if there is a consideration in the future.
Yeah. So the eligibility thing I think is key. I, I think it makes sense when I read it. But I, just to recap it, what I'm taking away from this is we don't want these parklets to encroach on the sidewalk. We want to permit them on, in private parking lots provided that they don't obstruct any paths right away and they don't exceed more than five parking spots. So within the, the boundaries of this district, that would be allowed. And then we would take a met maximum of forty-two spots on Del Mar. And no more than six consecutive spaces together. So no more than three parklets adjacent to each other. And then we'd have to have some spacing after that.
That should be in front of the business.
Yeah, that maybe we want to add that, that the parking should be in front of the business, the restaurant. And I don't know if you would consider if there's two restaurants next to each other, can they share space? To, you know, maybe they want to go in fifty-fifty, something like that. And that would address maybe some of the non-restaurant owners so that you don't have, well, I want, I have to have my own space because I'm my own restaurant. And I got a guy next to me who's doing the same thing. Maybe they want to pool it and share it. I don't know how they work it out, but it's possible that that could accommodate two, you know, one parklet could accommodate two restaurants, therefore not taking as much street parking and not being in front of non-restaurant businesses. That could be another option.
Yeah, I think that that would be consistent with the intent of what we have here. So the example of the three spots, you just remove the edge barrier and allow, you know, if there are two restaurants that were collaborating, you know, whether that was five spaces or six. And then, yeah, I think that that would be consistent.
Sure. For tonight, it's just discussion, right?
Right. Yeah, we're just giving staff input.
The only action that we need to take, we have to take we need to give direction on how to pursue.
Yeah, we actually won't even make an environmental planning, just any direction and recommendations for
We have given Mike. Okay, before we keep on, we have another public comment.
Yes, we have a card. Apologize, there's no name on it. If you, there's no name on the card, miss, but if you would like to state your name, you can remain anonymous if you'd prefer.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Donatella Polizzi. I am both business owner and resident of downtown San Clemente. And I have a question. Parking is the major issue. Until two years ago, there was parking enforcement. In the last couple of years, parking enforcers have disappeared. And we have noticed people parking early in the morning and leaving in the afternoon on Del Mar. So maybe it could be reevaluated to have some sort of control on the parking time. I was in Venice two days ago and on the Abbot Kinni Boulevard where there are stores and restaurants. And there is two hour parking limits. I was saying more than two hours. So I moved, I got up, moved my car, parked it somewhere else. And, and that gave the chance to, to someone else to park in my spot. So maybe we could pay more attention at parking control. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that is one of the recommendations in Parkinson's. Consider that. So that's why we need to have staff dovetail that in somehow because that's been battered around for years and years, timed parking along Del Mar and metered parking and which is not a favorite. I don't think anybody. But is that the last, last card?
That's the last card that we have.
Okay, let's go. If anybody has any particular comments they'd like to direct to Jonathan for him to consider when putting this together. Let's go ahead and start with Commissioner Camp and we'll just run the horn.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm kind of good with what's been discussed. I assume you've been taking notes.
And I have the recording.
Yeah. And so I think there's a lot of good comments that have been made. I don't think I need to make any more. My position, we talked about that more later is I think it's a great opportunity to make a run at it and see how it works. I have a feeling it's going to come to a level that makes sense, given the fact you know, there's not that many restaurants on Del Mar and not that many folks given the fact that they have indoor dining now are going to actually spend the money to put these in. In general, city council wants outdoor dining. I mean, that's what they basically told.
And our general plan has that.
Yeah. And so I think this is a good approach. I was, I was a little concerned about the temporary nature. If it's one year, even less people are going to want to spend that kind of money to do so.
More like eighteen months, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to take, even, even if you're applying, right? It's an over the counter thing, I guess. But it's going to take you a couple of months or more just to get everything together and get it built out and ready. Maybe we do need to consider eighteen months because it's one year now. It's what we're talking about, right? From the time that it's implemented. So we
Yeah, so the twenty twenty-three. The period would end at the end of twenty twenty-three. Chair Crandall mentioned earlier, there is a CIP that could impact that timeline. I'll have some more clarity for the commission on that specific issue next.
Also, the only thing that really daylights or is the ease of using, using your liquor license to serve out on the patio. They really aren't saying anything about food service. The city can leave it there as long as they want, if they're willing to just either serve just food or go through the hoops to get liquor license allowed on the outside patio through ABC.
Yeah, that's a big limitation right there. I mean, that's going to have an impact. Because it doesn't, maybe it pencils to just serve food, but I doubt.
Yeah. That's not the moneymaker.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I echo that again, I think the guidelines that the subcommittee came up with are really good. And I made my comments about the lighting already. I would just say, Jonathan, just regards to the cleanup of the report here. It is just a little confusing with the parking. It feels like we should, that's a separate matter, like a strategy is like we need, we need a vehicular, you know, parking strategy long-term and maybe suggest some specific tactical things that we could do separate from this outdoor dining so that it's clear, those actions are clear. The other thing that I would recommend for this report is the notion that this is only addressing a certain part of the city, you know, Del Mar, the pier bowl area. And that there may be other areas of the city that we should look at and that would be, but that's not included in the scope of this. So maybe ask the council for some direction on the other, other elements of the city unless you want to fold in if they have a private parking lot citywide. That's to me was just a little bit confusing, right? So if that could be clarified for next time, that would be, that would be good. And I, I just would echo again, this is a good proof of concept of evolving Del Mar and to be a more people active, a more people gathering, a more one of these spaces that, you know, increases vibrancy of the city. And so we can be, it should not just be seen as this is it. This is, should be looked at as a path that we're on to make the city, you know, more vibrant and make this more of an, of a people-centric place where people are gathering and do not only just having social interactions, but doing commerce and doing business and shopping local. And I think there's a lot we can do with the local businesses to make it more inviting and welcoming. And this is just a step. Because we could do things to make this permanent, carving out these spots. So I just think it's the kind of thing where we just need to talk about the evolution of Del Mar as part of this process instead of just looking at it in a isolated sense of just, well, we're just going to do these permits and that's it. That would be my thought, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I'm, I'm on the designer review subcommittee. A lot of my comments are incorporated in there and referred to, I've had to say tonight, so I'm obviously supportive of the, of the effort.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Bresson.
I'm supportive of the effort. I think it provides a, a good vibe for the, the area. I'm a little concerned about the expense for the businesses that are need to make the investment for one year. So I kind of think the parking situation will take care of itself because I don't believe all the restaurants will pencil this out and along with the liquor license that will be needed at some point. So I'm in full support and somehow hopefully the ones that do take advantage of it will, will be able to enjoy a crowded restaurant and the businesses around will also enjoy more people coming just to dine outside.
I'm open to the concept of it being temporary. But I just think it's another one of the issues that points to the deficiency of parking in Del Mar. And till we start talking about ways to increase the parking, we're always going to be talking about party. It's like the inevitables. Okay, I am certainly in favor of what the design review did. I think we had a good discussion this evening. I'm comfortable with actually limiting to sixteen outdoor seats. I'm comfortable with actually limiting to sixteen outdoor seats. And. I don't see any need to give away that much more. And I. Hope that we can. Somehow document that in. Okay, and then I'm also still considering. The possibility that it is a, some kind of a. Not conditional use permit because that requires going through all the planning department and whatnot. But some kind of a special event deal where. When I went through the, the parking study, the code and. The outdoor dining code, there's a lot that's going to change to coordinate it with this. And when we do that, then we're going to have to go back and do it again for. People on their own parking lots, outdoor dining. And that gets so complicated that if for the short term, we can do it with a. Permit that is somewhat ministerial with. Architectural review of some sort, either in-house or. Develop a management team or whatnot. That may be a, a direction to go because it would be almost instantaneous to get that done.
Understood. I'll take a look at that with our, our city attorney.
Okay. Do you have any comment on that just offhand, Mel? Okay, very good. I'll give one more chance to the public if anybody wanted to step forward and speak to what direction we've given staff. And I see none. To our agenda and. Then we will close the new business section. Thank you very much, Jonathan, and good job.
Thank you.
Old business. None, reports from commissioners and staff. Adam, would you just give a, a quick. Synopsis of your thinking and moving the meetings forward in the evening. And let everybody hear the justification and give us their blessings that we do that.
I can give a synopsis of options, but I, if we're going to actually move a meeting. Permanently, we'd want to agendize that for another.
Another meeting. Let's say you're just checking on availability of the. Commission to.
Yeah.
Attend that schedule.
Yeah, so. Since we have a new commission, thought has crept out. About whether we want to continue having the meeting start at, at seven or move them up to six. But it depends on availability. But I, I, I know that in the past, we had the meeting start at six. Because the study sessions were at six and it would be difficult for some people to get here before, before six to take part in that. But there are, there are many times where we don't have a study session and so the meeting starts at seven. And that gets, that just gets a little late. For staff and some of our consultants that helps out.
Very good. So just a nod of the head saying if you're comfortable with that. It's not a vote, it's not making a decision, it's just. Okay. Okay. It would be five o'clock if we had a study session.
Potentially it would be.
Yeah, okay. Any other reports of commissioners and staff?
I have nothing else to report.
I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And I do not see it to a date or anything.
No, we should be adjourning to March second at six PM.
So the motion is to adjourn to March second at six PM. By Prescott and a second by McCaffrey. Vote, Commissioner McCaffrey. Mr. Prescott. Commissioner McCann.
Hi.
Commissioner Casco.
Hi.
Commissioner Camp.
Right.
And Commissioner Crandall was also an eye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.